China.
I know.
No.
But you know. You don't have.
That's really.
H H.
I think it's.
I know that's.
It's Amanda does.
I said.
No.
I think it's. Chapel A. So why am I saying? Chapel H H E S is.
Yeah, I was.
You know. What you would be.
Not yet, okay.
Oh, yeah.
And she came in tonight.
Okay, so that sure was gonna happen.
Okay, yeah, that I would.
Oh.
Really?
It was the number five.
Yeah. It's the how.
I don't really.
What she said.
I don't know.
Okay.
I do want to close.
And my.
Well, that's. Yes.
You know.
I got it. You got. You know what's the password? This is all.
I guess. Yeah, I was just saying. I want to say this all way. Go.
Oh, and you still work there.
Thank you.
It's.
And. Do it.
Yeah, when in.
Okay. For off the launch. When I when I don't.
Or.
All right. Okay, John Horson's planning board agenda once he made. June fifth, two thousand twenty four. At seven oh four P M. Need a motion to accept the minutes of the May first twenty twenty four meeting. So move. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Oh, please.
Joey Atkinson.
Hi.
Alan Curran.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
Hi.
Angela Hawken.
Hi.
Ken Castro.
Hi.
Matt Mustakow. And I'm Steve.
Correspondence. I'm moving right along old business. On number three A, number nine twenty. Global Solar Project. About you. And was the two of their. Basically. The other.
They're together.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two properties, but one basic project.
All right.
One fifty nine Respawn Road and. Four ninety nine Respawn Road. Recycle and review. Is that what we're at? Yes. That's real. I thought we wanted to tell a public here. Do that. All right, now, what do you think should probably talk about the meeting? First.
Meeting.
July meeting. Is this is is Wednesday is the third. You won't be.
I'm not gonna be here.
You won't be.
We'll be next week.
You can't do that really. Thank well.
Time for me.
Yeah. How anybody July third? You're here.
I'm just.
You're here.
Yeah. And. Yeah. I'm going to camp the next day, so I may be back and yeah. I might be on the podcast.
Okay. You're here. That's three. Not sure. Am I being? Okay. You're here.
I'm gonna shave your.
I'm gonna shave you. No. No. We'll pretend we don't know you. Okay.
That's.
As long as we have four. As long as we have four. And we can twist.
We have an alternate too, you know, right? We have one or two alternates.
I don't think I don't. I don't know that we ever.
He came up with two names and made prove them for alternates and said.
Yeah, I don't think that now will there's ever a stand or snap now. Uh.
So, Joe, you can do the public hearing. That's. Smile.
All right, so I was here the last week, so we're ran on this. Question I have is. According to the minutes, they may need a couple of variances. Uh, yes, they have made it. They have made a. Request of the. Of the town board to. Uh, amend. Our setback for. A single project crossing a property line. To reduce the. Reduce the seventy five feet. And so that it would be twenty feet on each side, so there'd be room to get around it. But this way. We wouldn't basically take, uh, the way I look at it is. We 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 could have a project, then we could have seventy five feet, then we could have seventy five feet, then we could have another project, and they're basically the same project. So that doesn't make much sense to use up. More outside and pull them together. And, uh, but we 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 we'd make sure. So they've asked for that. Recently, so the town board will. Will work on that. I I told I told him that it'd probably be. By the time they held their public hearing and did everything, it'd be the August meeting. So if we held this public hearing at the next meeting. We would be fine. The other thing they did ask. Uh, was that we have the. We have the issue of the.
Right.
Of the movable panels that will. Break the fifteen foot height. At that point. And they they've asked for that, uh. That, uh. That change also. But it wouldn't be. Static.
Well, we had suggested a twenty foot, which that would that would for all. Technology today, that would be fine. Joe just moved it to twenty feet, but if you wanted to make, I mean, it's up to the board to make it. Something else to say, this doesn't apply to moving panels. If you already want to do it, I thought the simplest thing was just to make it twenty.
If you have, we made it one thing, then. Yeah. I mean, what?
How, um.
It's the panels.
How how high we're. Question. So our system is the the center axle is mounted twelve feet, all right? So it swings up to sixty degrees. So that's when at at the end of the day and at the beginning of the day. So that's when it comes up out of that fifteen foot. Uh. I couldn't. There. There's no racket system that I know of today that that couldn't fit within twenty feet. Uh. So that's what we suggested, um.
So this board will have that at the next meeting to comment on. We'll have those two items to comment on at the next meeting. As a town board is gonna take it up. Next week and make the referrals, because the referrals will have to go to the. To the county, to the town. And to all the neighboring communities. Because it's a change in our zoning. Uh, then solar is allowed where wherever, so. So.
John, would would you want me to attend the town board meeting to speak on it or or be available?
I I wouldn't think so next week, because I I we've already just put it down as a referral at that point, okay? Uh, so, uh. Uh, they'll refer it, then. Then this board will handle it, and then the the public hearing would be in August, and. I would say you want to be here to talk to these guys about recommendations. And whether you want to hit the the county. Whether the county will. Care.
Yeah, I know. I shouldn't. I shouldn't think so, but we don't.
I, you know. No idea.
In the last two projects we've had like that, you guys have done, we have we done it with a variance? It was, you we got a waiver, but it was because it's a minor exceedance, um, but we figured if you're going ahead with. Adjusting a provision of the law, you might as. Every, yeah, every time you can walk in here, we're gonna have to do this. Yeah. Might as well make up. Yeah.
So we 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 could we could make the change, yes. John, was there also an easement issue? Uh, that would go away with the twenty feet. That would go away at that point. So we don't have. Enough that it's like planned based on. The new. Not yet. Not yet. So. We call it for the public hearing. The July meeting. Yeah, we should call for it, so we get. Then we can get. I think we give feedback on everything then at that point, then at least you'll have. You'll have everything. Yes, that will have to be explained that there. That 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 change, but, uh. So. So you've already accepted the preliminary. Yes. That could be modified, that's. In the final. Right. So.
And you you asked for the carbon calculation. We saw that.
I was trying to get that.
And then I I think, did you get comments back from county? Yet.
Well, the determination, I think I saw.
Well, definitely.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
Okay. Right? Well, I don't know. Then I'll see the other, yeah.
Journeyway clearing in this. Yeah, this this woods and brush.
All right.
Authority, so you get with stormwater and stuff. Yeah, we will have to, uh, achieve a kind of stormwater condition. They they sent some pretty extensive comments on the last one.
Okay.
Uh, that we will be addressing when we go through our permit and state's speediest permit. Uh, but they're they're pretty thorough.
That would be a condition of our.
Okay. Still want to.
So really, tonight is just call. Call for a public hearing on those.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
I would. I I don't see why we can't just. Join them and call for a public here. I don't know who they have. Also caring.
Those were talking. Last time, I think we you maybe gave us the list of the butters and we sent out the notice if you want to do it.
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah. But so they got we gotta do that.
Yeah, but you want to do or do you want to?
If you give us the list, we can send it out.
All right, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Okay, great.
So we need a motion to go for the public hearing to July. Third meeting.
So.
So that would be, yeah.
Like a motion that for a public hearing for, uh. July third. For both. Uh, the. Google and Redford Solar Projects. Second.
And motion, second call of all of the police.
Joey Atkinson.
Hi.
Curran. Amy Crandall. Angelo Hawken. I can the Castro. Matt Mustakow.
Hi.
I'm Steve.
Hi. We're all set for public hearing July.
Yep. Um, did you receive any comments back on the lead agency? Correspondent?
Now, we have. So we'll have to. It's been thirty days. For that. Just after three days.
Got it. All right. Thanks very much.
Right now. All right, moving along, new business. Number three fifty five B, Martin's Auto Sales LLC, eighteen sixty four Grand Central Avenue, horses. Special news permit.
Home sales.
Vehicle sales. Good evening.
Dave.
So this property is. At a double for auto repair. Yeah. The old, yeah, the old. Yeah.
Greg. Was changing.
Really? Yeah. So basically, it's. All the shaded areas where you are, you're gonna have cars.
Yeah, Greg and I actually drew that up together. Ask.
They have to bother me. They've already got it, you know.
Yeah, that's about a huge right away.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. It's kind of it's kind of interesting. It's honestly. I don't even map sign is actually on the other side of the property line. But. This is more accurate, right? Actually, no, is it? The sign is on. Wrong side of the line there.
I'll be retired.
Yeah, that's definitely accurate. I think Greg and I had a conversation about that when we were drawing it up.
He's not retired.
That's, you know.
Yeah, I bought it, but. I did, but it used to be kind of there for like.
Anything.
And inside on it, right?
I mean, it's all existing pavement.
Yeah.
And it's. Got plenty of room. I don't think we're within any. End area. We will just be counted.
County.
It's really county, right?
Yeah.
We need a public hearing this or that? Uh.
I don't remember anything.
We we don't. We don't. Uh. Oh, wait a minute. I. I I apologize. We're doing. We're under the new system.
Yeah.
It's all here. So you're you're doing both site plan. And. The, uh, special permit. So, yes, you do need a. Public hearing. For that's. Yeah, on the special permit portion, you need a public hearing. As you guys are doing both both jobs now. I did rewrite that, didn't I? I should. Are we done? Well, yeah. There's no purpose for it to go the other way, and.
I had already previously filed for my dealer's license and the state called me and said that the building wasn't something to do it, so I had to send it. That was sort of the second time that I found that, so. It's now. With your type of charm.
Who owns across the street now?
I sold that to John Billings.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, when I grow, this is a bar, so.
Yeah, it was a little Beaman's Restaurant, too.
Yeah, Beaman's.
Beaman's, yeah. Joey Cinderlars.
Joey Cinderlars had a barbecue place there.
Trifos.
Yes, but it was. Whorehouse started out. Whorehouse. Criswells. Criswells, them built it, yeah. They're horrible. You have to listen to.
Like, what are you talking?
And we remember. We remember.
That's the part where I blast them back.
I worked for Trifos, so. That's how far I'm at.
We won't call it.
Isn't this fun? Going down better than.
And you. So you still need a motion for the special permit to help look here?
Referral. It'll be a referral.
Referral to the county.
County.
Referral to the county, public hearing. Could be set. It'll take care of getting.
Yeah, it should be July third.
It'll be July third, seven seventeen.
It's the night before the fourth.
He will have. Somebody will be here.
Yes, we're going.
So we have to actually get to that point before I can get the special experiment.
We have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, for sure.
Oh, yeah.
If if people come in with questions, we can't. We can't answer. You could. But you can get that right out to. To the county, so otherwise.
Yeah.
We might. Have an.
Could be zoom in.
Uh?
Here could be zoom.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, if you're.
I could send you the instructions.
You could do that.
I think Greg already said.
Did he? Okay.
Yeah, and it's on the it's on the website.
Holiday, you know.
So. But you, yeah, you could. Yeah, you could do that, but you would. You will. The public hearing, you do not participate in. So when the public hearing is open, call for anybody who has who has any comments for or against. You do not comment. You are the applicant. Okay? But if somebody comments, and there's got to be question, the board may have questions for you.
So do you think that we can? We can get through the whole process all the way to approve, file, prove seeker is all things?
I don't see.
You know, I.
Yes, you get into the county real quick.
I work on farm.
As long as the county gets, yeah, as long as the county gets gets so toward the end of the month.
If you can zoom in, we should be able to finish it up.
Yeah.
We'd want to do here, other.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll hit that out.
I mean, it's our end. I mean, it's. This is this is this is a slam dunk. This is a simple one.
Yeah, right.
It's all existing, existing pavement.
That was my thought on it. It was based on that it was already existing.
Yeah. Yes.
I just kind of hit it. The way it landed with the lobby and written at twenty three, I got smoked and had to first hit my.
Right.
Dealer application to. Get the zoning right. Proceeded, so.
Right? We can do everything then.
So we need a motion to go for the public hearing. And to make the referral.
And to make refer to the town. So move.
So.
A motion a second. I don't know, please.
Joey Atkinson.
Hi.
Alan Curran.
Hi.
Amy Crandall. I'm Angela Hawken. I'm. Matt Ted. And Castro. Matt Mustakow.
Here.
And it's E V.
I'm motion carry.
Okay.
We'll see you in the morning.
All right.
What about voice?
Yeah.
We're good, right? Yeah, you're. That's going to be external. I can get him logged, yeah.
Great.
All right. Moving along. Oh, Stacy Richmond. Probably okay, four sixty seven Old Car Road. For a gap house.
That's correct.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having.
So you know us what you're up to. We need a site plan.
Yes.
That's the original one. I I'm an educator, so I go a little above with this loan stuff. And then. Something next to that.
It was great. Let's see.
And it gets a little messy. So I I threw it. It's the same thing here, just without the dimensions. Okay, see it looks better. And I have a. My designer gave me a color version. It'd be mad if I don't stand out as well, so. Yeah, that's.
I'm excited.
On your way home, Peter.
It is.
That's not a start. I've walked by the burn every particular one.
Oh, do you? Yeah. Uh. Oh, I'm excited about that. I know.
So. We we what we've done so far, we've cleaned up the property, taken out all the sheds and. The whole inside. They gutted it when they sold it to us. I mean. There was nothing there.
It's probably a good deal for you.
Yeah, it was a great deal, and. I worked with Greg a lot with the parking, uh. The the one thing, it shows we have thirty four hundred square feet. The the storage area is literally just studs and electric. There's there's nothing.
The law's.
Yeah, so we don't have a current plan for that, so. The the one parking, the color copies, the parking design is easy for twenty three spots in our fifteen hundred square feet. It the the. Rest of the area in the green, I think it's green on the color copy. Uh, that shows potentially we have more spots if we ever wanted to use the storage area. But we're pretty overwhelmed. We're just opening up as it is right now.
So is the patio area going to be seating also?
Yeah, there'll be some seating there. Half of that's going to be an artificial turf putting ground. So.
Okay.
So that's maybe, I think that's seventeen hundred square. So you're talking eight, nine hundred square feet.
You probably should show that.
Okay.
Is seating there, so you can compute your parking with that.
Okay.
And also. Your restroom is where I have to bench. What's inside seating is outside also.
Okay, yes, we currently have blue. I only brought one copy. We have. Free, uh, toilets and a urinal. It's going to be when you walk in a common space with a huge open area and sink, and then each of the restrooms will be. Completely isolated. Like closets almost, so. We were told, I think, one restroom for forty occupants.
Um. Each sucks. Yeah. So what's your occupancy inside the building?
Ninety five.
Ninety five, okay. And outside it would be. When are you gonna have?
Well, it'd be nine hundred square feet, so. Fifteen.
Divided by fifteen square foot comparison.
We just didn't know how that worked yet. It's outside.
It's.
We didn't plan to have them as packed together, but we know that's not how it works, so.
If we don't include it and put it on there, you're gonna. And you'll be back in waiter.
Right, isn't it? Right, absolutely.
Everything you wanted to do, you should get it on your. Existing site plan, even if you don't want to do it right now, and it's, you know, maybe you're a true downer.
Okay. Um, it's sixty. Sixty.
That's another sixty. A hundred and fifty five. So that would be. What do you need? One or? Three hundred footer. One for a hundred gross of floor area. And one for each and boarding.
Oh, we're talking the parking right now.
Right. It gives you base.
Fifteen hundred, nine hundred. And four hundred. Okay, well, I believe our current design is twenty three. That can be changed, so. And we have all the.
All the extra.
All the extra, yeah. You have.
Park a lot can be lit.
Uh. It's a great question. Uh. Uh, I mean, our outward, it's a tap off, so you're, you're, you're open till eight or nine at night. We weren't planning on it, I, I know a lot of the other ones aren't, I don't know how much that plays into it like. Or says, or anything like that? Any food or anything like that? We're working with a company out of Buffalo SLA for our liquor license, and the state's required six items, so, or seven, why don't you talk about that?
Yeah, substantial food items, so, um, we're gonna either go through weapons, all these are Sam's Club, um, just for like veggie trays, fruit trays. Um, prepackaged fresh sandwiches, um, and that also have food trucks and venues from local restaurants for our customers.
Where would those food trucks be parked?
Yeah.
Uh, there's electric in the front right, if, or the front left, excuse me, um, and our electrician has said that there, that would be a good area.
And with a cord, it could be anywhere in the lawn area, but we left quite a significant amount of room up front in the parking lot.
Could be a bar, people could just like walk in, and so people aren't tripping over or anything.
What do you think? It's. It's like. It's not an access. Back.
Was there something wrong with that spot?
Hey, you needed one eight, eight foot access aisle on either side, looks like you got about four feet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, stay cold.
On either side?
Put those together.
Oh, so you put them together, okay.
Put them together.
Okay.
These are ten by twentys.
Yes.
I don't see a scale on this, so.
I know they are, I mean, I don't know how much it might work or anything, but.
So the patio is going where the loading dock was?
No, the, the loading dock is being filled in, so that's, that's gonna be the lawn area.
Oh.
The patio is right next to the building.
Oh.
It, it's, I think twenty-four, five feet wide, this can be looked right there, and like I said, the plan is half of that's gonna be an artificial turf putting green gated out.
It'll be like, there's three garage doors, those are the first one, that's where the patio and.
Okay.
Putting green, and then other two on the lawn.
You're not making anything that way, you're not.
No, yeah. No, it's a system called Pour My Beer, so you come in and you, you pay your money and get a card, and then you pour what you want, you can pour two ounces, four ounces, eight ounces. It'll be twenty-four taps, beer, wine, uh, maybe nitro coffee of some sort.
So you put your card in?
Well, you come to a check-in area right in the front, and, and you'll pay with cash or your credit card.
Right.
And then you'll get one of our cards that we put your cash or credit on.
Oh.
And then after so many ounces, you have, it shuts off, so you just can't have fifty, fifty drinks while you're there. You can, you can recheck in, but it's just so we check.
Can't go home with those empty or what?
No, you. No, and then when, when you're ready to check out, like, you, you don't have to use the card, and you don't take it with you, then we cash you out as you leave.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, but while you're there, you, you're wandering around and sitting at the different types of tables, whatever, and you sample or pour what you want, be all sorts of size of glasses.
Doing illegal ones, oh, they had a.
And illegal, illegal place.
They have a smaller version, we, we've been in contact a lot with the owners of illegal donuts and beer, and it's the same type of system. We're not doing the donut aspect or that type of thing. I, I, surprisingly, it's good.
Yeah. They can't, so they can't, the taps will not work if you just go up to it, they have to show us their ID and credit card, and then they'll get the card to be able to go up and use them.
There's no bar in here, just.
Uh, if you, if you look at the one time, yeah, so when you walk in, there's four smaller tables in front of the two windows, and then the U-shaped area is the check-in counter. And there's gonna be four seats that would serve as a bar, but no one's gonna serve you. And then the, the right side are the, the three bigger tables, and we have five tables, there might only be three there, we're still working on that, there're gonna be some custom made things. So.
We have non-alcoholic options too, and, um, Dixie cup, so if people wanna make like root beer floats or Guinness float, so it can be like non-alcoholic or alcoholic, so that was another thing that we thought would be a little bit different.
Yeah. Fine.
Um, one, sort of sight line again, what's your distance between the parking spaces, between the roads of parking?
I will have to find that out with my.
You need a minimum of twenty feet, and then the work, can people actually back out?
Okay, twenty feet. Okay, what are the actual spaces that are supposed to be?
Ten by twenty.
Ten by, so I, again, I will double check, I believe, looking at the scale, that's what it is in between, I mean, I, I, I'll find out for sure. But I know.
You, you're, you're, you're probably, I, I, looking at this stuff, it's nice for here, but I don't, I don't think the county's gonna accept this as a site plan.
Okay.
So you've probably gotta give everything onto one plan and, and make, in order to get it, get it done.
Do you have somebody helping you with your building plans?
Yeah, I have a designer, uh, but I was originally informed, you take the old site map and you draw your dimensions and pencil, it just looks so, it looks so ugly with all the other stuff on there.
Uh, yeah.
But I.
All you can do is use an existing survey map.
Okay.
And they can impose your.
There's.
Impose it on there.
Absolutely.
So it's to scale, scaled out, works, and.
Okay.
So.
That's easy enough, we, we have all those dimensions, so.
But if you've got somebody doing your zoning plans or something, yeah, you should be.
Yep.
Should be, so.
So you want all the measurements for everything?
Yeah, yes, because we look here, I'm going, geez, you're twenty feet, because no, because connect our back out.
Yeah.
Go back out.
And I watched him do it, I know it's there, but I know it's not on the paper, so I, I.
And this, like, and this is the first time we've seen this, this should have been in, not back, it's allow a reading.
Yes, and that's, that's maybe in the first time.
So, but. One thing I just noticed, the patio is away from the neighbors, you got neighbors on the other side of you.
Yes.
So the patio area, for noise and stuff, would be away, he's business zone, but it's still would be, that's a good spot for it.
Okay.
Um.
The patio was, uh. Is that the one that just we just did the? Uh.
Duty shop.
Duty shop there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It would be right alongside of that.
Talk to all the surrounding neighbors.
Yeah, we've met.
Yeah.
We see them out a lot.
But I just, you know, you say, it's on the opposite side, it's actually opposite side of the road, like.
Hmm.
Where is a neighbor right there?
Yeah, where is, where Wilbur is there.
Yeah, the Wilbur house, and then the garage is turning, you'll do what you want, and they said. That's exciting. We figure, we figure all their spouses or partners will come to our. That's how we're.
I'll drive you off when you go use your.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, take your time. Or the other way around, who knows?
Pizza walk up there and all that stuff, you got a whole little neighborhood, you got a homemade right there.
Well, yeah, we, yeah, uh, that's the plan, I mean, we, we have no problems with other people bringing food or having it delivered there, that's the whole point.
The community's been so supportive, it's been really humble, so.
Well, it's good to see a big, vacant building being used.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Tom, what did you say about the bathrooms, that was one of the things, I don't know if we actually caught.
Well, yeah, but here, what, what happens lots of times is people will put, um. Seating in, and a master bathroom's indoor seating, and the outdoor seating, all of a sudden, they've expanded so much that they don't have enough bathrooms for. The outside and the inside, you gotta count them both.
So when you, when you said that, the square footage or whatever that was, you wanted each men's and women's.
You gotta have.
Have that certain amount.
Ours are gonna be.
Well.
Our, any men or women could go in either of the three.
So our understanding with the concept we're trying is, you walk into a big open area and it's just a huge sink. And then there's three separate stalls, one's ADA compliant, and each stall's completely shut off from the other, so nobody even in there. So when you walk out, the only thing you're doing is washing your hands in a big sink, if that happens to be the case. Just for spacing, that's how.
So I don't know how that fits into the.
Men's. That's Greg's, Greg's deal.
I think Greg told us, oh, hi Greg. One, I think it's one unit for every forty, I think.
Yeah, we'll, we'll sort that out with.
He's trying to say something. You know.
Yeah. Oh, I was just gonna say, well, when. When you guys figure out exactly what you wanna do, we'll, we'll work with the designer to, um, make sure that all that's up to code.
Okay.
Uh, but they're pretty close right now, it's just, um, sorting out exactly the occupant load with the outside and the inside, and then working with the designer to make sure that. There's enough, uh, bathrooms for everyone.
Okay, well, thank you.
But that's something we can do soon, because we're hoping to start soon, and hoping to open in August, so I didn't know like if the timeline, like.
Yeah, I mean, the, the big thing for me is, you know, the sooner we, the sooner I get a plan, the sooner I can review it, the sooner I can, you know, let you know if, if we need more or it's good. Um. So the sooner I get something in paper in front of me.
Need a, you need, you need a, you need a site plan that we can get to the county.
Yep, I can do that.
If we can, i- if the county meets this month, which you never know, uh, if not, we gotta get a, a referral down so that there are thirty days runs. Uh, my theory would be right now, I don't know that we would be, the, the board would be quite ready to approve it July third. Uh, so it might go over the August meeting, but you, as soon as you get stuff in, and we can get it out, get that stuff back, I can.
Well, the site map, I can send that to wherever it has to go tomorrow. Then I can get the bathroom plans to Greg, I mean, as far, that, that's how we have.
To the referral, we just need the site.
We just need the site.
You do it right now.
Right, okay.
Don't care about the building plan, don't care about any of it.
But show the patio and the seating board. Get a real computer, the parking based on that, so.
Well, I can, I can, I mean, like I said, we have it, I just don't have the dimensions, so I can send it to wherever it needs to go tomorrow, and it's gated in the system and processed or whatever.
So probably get stuff to Greg so we can get referred. We don't need a public hearing, is, we just need to take action on a final site plan.
Okay.
And, uh, that would be if the county meets at the end of the month, we can get the referral to them, so I can get on their agenda, and then we can take action. If everything goes really, the July third meeting.
Okay. So it's, I mean, you guys, I, I don't, you're free to say, but.
Same issues, yeah.
If we do those things, then we should be able to move forward, like.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be any other tie-ups or anything.
Shouldn't be, not here.
Okay.
No.
That's good.
Do you have an idea of how many maximum seats we would have on that, the original, the parking spaces?
Figure out your parking. Okay, if, if you, if you wanna go beyond, then you're gonna be going to, you're gonna be making another application, you're gonna be going to the zoning board of appeals for a variance.
Make it be as simple as a small patio.
It could be as simple as dunk with seeds out there.
Hmm, yes. Bigger pudding. Okay, no, that's good to know, so, cause that's, that's probably how it'll have to work, so.
I mean, typically, typically what happens is. Seats on the patio mean empty seats inside.
Yes.
You know, but unfortunately, the parking can't be done that way, right?
Okay, that's fair.
Three in motion to. Bring this to the council. What anymore?
Yep. So as soon as we get your stuff, we can go down.
Okay.
So make a motion.
Hold second. Motion in second.
Hey, Joey Atkinson.
Hi.
Alan Curran, Amy Crandall, Angela Hawkins, I can cast pro, Matt Mustico.
Hi.
I'm Steve.
Alright.
Alright.
Can I just email the site plans for the?
It'll need to be, I won't just bring in a card copy.
Okay, I'll bring it in tomorrow.
There's only a scale of problem, we will check it.
Greg, is there a time tomorrow, you'll be in, I could pop in?
Um. Definitely during office hours, eight to ten, but I know you're usually like eleven, eleven-thirty or something, if, email me in the morning, let me know when you're coming, I'll be there.
I can probably make it eight to ten, so. Alright, so we'll, we'll get that stuff, thank you, everybody.
My kids are going to.
Yeah, it's not really.
I don't. Pretty much an investment, especially if you're okay. Your journey.
So. Second. Who, who did first? Hmm?
What?
Who did first? Who's at first?
What's on second?
Mike, what are you doing hiding over there?
Call the wrong.
Oh, sorry.
I was curious. I honestly, I, I'm a little ashamed, I've never been to a planning board meeting.
Wait one minute.
Okay, hold on one sec.
Call her on.
Yeah, Joey Atkinson, Amy Curran, Angela Hawkins.
Hi.
Hi.
I do.
Amy Crandall, Angela Hawkins. Time's TV.
Yeah.
She's always, she's trying to marry us off, I swear.
It's hilarious. It's hilarious to see why her, because she uses abbreviations for names, and AC is really messing her up.
It does, I've been doing ass.
Yeah, I know.
Oh my god. You gotta laugh, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Good for you. It was entertaining, but I do that right, I'm so.